Please rise to the stage. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brian coming back?
I just answered.
I know that he was had to find my emergency last week, but I don't know if it's affecting.
Mr. Basil, would you call the board first? Mr. Basil here. Mrs. Bites.
Here.
Mr. Doty.
Here.
Mr. Kurtz.
Here.
Mr. Rathke.
Here.
Mr. Speed.
Here.
Mr. Trudowski.
Here.
Mr. Wolf.
Here.
Mr. Martino.
Here.
Under announcements, I want to thank everyone for coming. If you haven't signed in in the back of the room, please do so, so we have a record of everyone who's here. There will be an executive session tonight after this meeting in the library to discuss some negotiations and personnel issues. And I also wanted to say that Thursday night, Mr. Kurtz and I attended the concert at the high school, and it was fantastic. Those kids deserve a heck of a lot of credit. They were phenomenal. So, credit to them. Are there any agenda edits? Saying none? Who's still in the studio?
Will come up.
Mrs. Martino, I'd like to introduce you, Abby Lodge and Elena Rosner, to come up to the podium. They are representatives of the student government. Steph Severs, our president, and Courtney Vodvich, our vice president, and our previous engagement head, our advisor, Mr. Bailey. But it won't take long for you to see these young ladies and the outstanding quality of students that they are in representing our school, ladies.
Welcome. If you would, just touch the button gently, and the red light should come on at the tip of the microphone.
Is it on?
Yep.
Okay. As Mr. McKnight said, on Abby Lodge, I'm a senior and secretary for student government. I would like to welcome my fellow officers, Stephanie Severs and Courtney Vodvich, president and vice president, both of whom did not be here tonight, and Elena Rosner, treasurer. This year, Daniel Boone has experienced things far from traditional. Beginning in the fall, the Boone Squad formed to unify our student section at the ballgames. Unlike years past where cheers were started to put the other team down, the Boone Squad sang along with the band and cheered in support of the Blazers. Flyers were friendship by R.K. Landis to advertise what color or theme the game would be, and the group also organized tailgating before the games. Boone sports have done incredibly well this year. Starting in the fall, girls soccer made it to county semifinals for the first time in several years. Cross country had seven boys and seven girls qualify for districts, and one runner, Abby Snyder, advanced to states. Then in the winter, boys' ice hockey team won the championship for their league for the first time ever. Also, wrestling sent four boys to districts. Just recently, in spring sports, track and field had two girls and three boys qualify for districts. Boone baseball went to county finals for the first time in 40 years, coming in second only to Governor Mithlin. Softball had an amazing regular season, going 18-1, and because of the power ranking, the team has been awarded a home game tomorrow night for the first district game. The school's music and arts have done exceedingly well this year, too. Indoor percussion ensemble placed third, and indoor color guard placed first in the Atlanta Coast Championship. At the Festival of Music in New York City this year, Daniel Boone choir won not only their division, but also overall choir. Also, in another week, the school's band will be performing at the Kimmel Center, a huge deal. The Indiana Boone's accomplishments stretch farther than just the high school. The community is involved as well. Through the combined efforts of students, staff, members of the community, there were 700 donors and 233 lives saved at the blood drives this year. This past weekend, Re-Link Re-Live, which held 52 teams comprised of 700 participants, $94,000 was raised in an effort to be one step closer to eliminating the word cancer from every language dictionary. This year's seventh annual Mr. Boone was a huge success story, with yet another full house in cons curre of his ground, Mr. Boone 2015. Finally, I'm sure many of you have heard the Jamie Cota story, the senior from Exeter High School who was recently killed in a car accident. While students from Boone, including Courtney Malanti and other DBYA members, wanted to help the Cota family through this traumatic time, they started Do a Dollar for Jamie fundraiser, which in just two days raised $1,254 and promoted safe driving in correlation with drunk driving awareness. When this money was presented to the Exeter principal, he broke down into tears. This really shows how students at Daniel Boone care for the communities and neighboring communities. The few items I have touched on tonight are just scraping the surface of accomplishments that the Daniel Boone High School has had this year. I'm proud to say I went to Daniel Boone, and I would like to thank all the students who gave me something to talk about and the school board for letting us speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That is a great summary of the year. Can we get that on the website?
How would you like to read the next part? Can we get it somewhere on the website?
Let me do this first. The procedures for public participation are on the inside of the blue cover. Usually, when we're voting on the budget, there is a lot of public participation, so I'm going to ask that if you come to the podium, you make all your comments or ask all your questions before the board responds, so that we're not eating into your three minutes. And, Mr. Wolf, if you would, please let me know when time's over for each person. Did you want to do these recognitions first?
Sure.
Before we get into presentations by the public, we have a lot of students here for recognition, and rather than hold them through the meeting, we're going to switch that around a little bit and do item seven before item six.
Do you want to stand on the other side and I'll announce it, and then I'll hand them to you? Okay. No, I have to read them first, all right?
It'll be all right.
All right. Tonight, we are recognizing the Daniel Boone High School and Middle School Technology Students Association first, second, and third place winners from the TSA State Conference held in April. These students have qualified for the TSA National Conference being held at the end of June. Congratulations on your win at states and good luck at nationals. And our first certificate of achievement goes to our high school student, and this is for Katerina Kishbaugh, TSA State Conference, second place, extemporaneous speech. Congratulations. And Katerina is our only high school winner that we're going to be recognizing tonight. Next, we have Ale Santos, TSA State Conference, first place, promotional design. Alexander Worrell, TSA State Conference, first place, PA Calculator Robots. Is that one not here? Next, we have Madison Bickings, first place, PA Calculator Robots. Emily Olafson, second place, PA Logo Design. Next, we have Quentin Stephanie, second place, PA RC Dragster. Next, we have Salvatore Cheffo, second place, PA RC Dragster. Tyler Shutt, second place, PA RC Dragster. Next, we have Ale Santos, second place, PA Safety Illustration Computer, and Ale Santos, third place, Energy Sources. Victoria Pastor, third place, Energy Sources. Edward Barnett, third place, Energy Sources. Justin Pfeifer, third place, Energy Sources. Edward Barnett received third place for his junior solar sprint. Justin Pfeifer, third place, junior solar sprint. Jacob Brendel, third place, junior solar sprint. Justin Semmer, third place, junior solar sprint. Brett Reinert, third place, Go Green Manufacturing. Ty Reinert, third place, Go Green Manufacturing. Christopher Confer, third place, Go Green Manufacturing. Madison Bickings, third place, Construction Challenge. Morton Brothers, third place, Construction Challenge. Valerie Peretta, third place, Construction Challenge. Hi, Bow. Lydia David Heiser, third place, PA Safety Illustration Computer. And another one for Lydia, third place, Environmental Focus. Lian McNamara, third place, Environmental Focus. Claire LeBlanc, third place, Environmental Focus. Mason Joelavet, third place, Environmental Focus. Paul Kingsbury, third place, Environmental Focus. And last but not least, Stephen Urillo, third place, Environmental Focus. Thank you, and that completes our recognition for this evening. Congratulations to all those winners, and good luck.
Now, are there any presentations by the public or the agenda items?
I had already presented the written material to the board for review. Just four points. We should be happy with a board that has exercised fiscal responsibility and pursued educational excellence within the constraints of what the community can afford. We have worked for years to achieve such a board that has been working along with the district administration to see priority educational needs of our students are met. Contrary to what some believe, there is no need to immediately raise property taxes, even a little bit, to build a reserve for the future. That is the kind of thinking that previous boards used to take money out of the property owners, business owners' pockets, and establish large slush funds of money right for picking for projects that have subsequently proven to be costly and mostly not needed. Taxes and authorities such as the school board should not be holding taxpayer money against future contingencies. The board is not a bank. That's not what taxes should be taken for. Taxes should be taken as needed. Former boards have plunged the DBASD into massive debt, service of which is taking about $7 million each year in taxpayer funding to repay. A new business manager, Mr. Small, has found ways to reduce the annual bite from this debt a little, and that is much appreciated. The lesson should be that spending and taxing for bricks and mortar essentially takes away from the ability to bring educational resources that bear for student benefit. Currently, it seems that some parties advocate raising taxes or thinking more about their home benefit as opposed to educational excellence. This kind of thinking has got to stop. Last, it has been suggested that people don't want to move into the district primarily because of degraded educational opportunity for their children. But according to township supervisors, one of whom spoke at the last committee of the hall meeting, the reason for population and enrollment decline is that families and businesses don't want to move here because of already too high property tax. Let's also pay heed to the fact that many who have the mantra, "We don't care, raise our taxes," are in many cases those who have low property assessments to begin with, or who have people in the district who will or can directly benefit from tax increases. Thanks for listening. Please don't raise our taxes in the district unless absolutely necessary, and then only to the level absolutely needed to continue educational excellence. Thank you.
Eric Tempton, Union Township, 2030, to Douglasville. This participation for public comment, so the agenda, I'm going to talk about. Very convenient to have those lights and have that red go off, so when you don't answer the question or you answer a part of a question, I have no time with the public, have no time to rebut it, and then you shut the mic off. And guess what? I don't get to talk no more like you did last time, you shut the meeting down. That's really professional, by the way. I'll tell you, that is ridiculous. The public should have a say, and when you answer a question, if they have to ask a question or have to rebut that question, they should be able to do it.
That's what you pay taxes for.
Thank you, Mr. Tempton. Saying you had a public comment.
Hi.
Turn on the mic.
Probably better that way. I just wanted to...
We have your name and address.
You can. Karen Slattery, Southern Road, Union Township. And I just first want to thank the board members. I realize that you're all volunteers, and I do celebrate that. I like the diversity that you bring and the backgrounds. Some of you I know, some of you I know well, some not too well at all, but I do appreciate your backgrounds and your willingness to work through a very difficult time. And the same for you, Mrs. Torja. You've joined us at a very rough time, so thank you for your service. I do echo Mr. Poole's sentiments, so I guess there's no need for me to repeat that. I think he summed it up pretty well for the taxpaying order, and I would just let you know that I appreciate and ask you to continue digging deep through the finances, figure out what can be done better on both sides. And, you know, once we get things sorted out, then we can look to talk about taxes and things of that nature. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Slattery. Saying no other public comments, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Can I have a question before we go on to that? What are you calling the consent agenda?
It's listed under consent.
From A? Okay.
So, P?
I'm finding things that were not on the May 11 agenda that are now appearing on this And I guess I'd like to understand why that is happening.
Under the consent part?
We're waiting for what you're referring to, Mr. White.
10, the numbering is different. 10A, B, extracurricular.
No, we're looking at item 8 is the consent agenda.
Letters A to P.
Through.
Okay, just more P.
All right.
Was that a Gilder Radner comment? Never mind.
No, okay.
Okay, a motion for P-A through P.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wolf, second by Mr. Dasky. Comments or questions about any items under the consent agenda?
Actually, I think it's a one. Did we, did we get a response from, was it the Turf?
From...
Yeah.
10%.
So, the penalty would be 10%.
I ordered the email to Mr. Small for his files.
Okay.
Ted, satisfy your question?
Yes.
Any other comments or questions?
This will be unanimous vote for approval unless there are votes to the contrary. Hearing none, motion passes.
Moving on to item nine, financial approvals. There are motion for either of the two items under financial approvals.
Make a motion for 9A.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dasky, second by Mr. Wolf. Comments or questions about the Corson credit request for tuition reimbursement? Saying none, Mr. Basil?
Mrs. Bites?
Yes.
Mr. Doty?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Rathke?
Yes.
Mr. Speed?
Yes.
Mr. Trudowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Basil, yes?
Yes.
Motion approved, 9-0. Item 9B, the budget for 2015-16 in the amount of $53,92,107.
Make a motion?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dasky, second by Mr. Wolf. Comments or questions?
This will be the preliminary, the final preliminary budget, just to be clear on that.
This is the budget that, it's titled the final budget, but it has to be presented with public under 30 days to review, and then we'll vote again in the last meeting of May, so it can be amended in June, and it can be amended if there is reason to amend Other comments or questions? Standing none, Mr. Basil?
Mr. Doty?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Rathke?
No.
Mr. Speed?
Yes.
Mr. Trudowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
No.
Mr. Basil, yes?
Mrs. Bites?
Yes.
Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passes 7-2. Moving on to item 10, personnel approvals. There are motion for personnel approvals.
Motion for 10A and B, second.
Motion by Mr. Wolf, second by Mr. Kurtz. Comments or questions?
I would like to suggest that we do not approve any of the extracurricular coaches for next year. I realize this is a volunteer, and that's, we're in the middle of a fundraising policy, and my feeling is that there could be some conflict if we start to approve next year's teams, and I don't see what the hurry is, because they're effective immediately. They start, as you say, tomorrow. We approve this tonight. My suggestion is that we don't approve the extracurriculars until...
How does that, like fundraising?
Because we're establishing the policies, and there'll be contradictory procedures in place. Some people will be following the old policies, and we're right in the middle of implementing a new policy. I would like all next year's sports to follow the new fundraising policies.
Well, let me ask Mr. McKnight, because athletics come under the jurisdiction of the high school principal, what would be the impact if we delayed approving the extracurricular appointments?
I think that coaching is a year-round activity now, so they're nonstop, and they're in the middle of all kinds of activities. If we don't approve people, I'm sure they'll cease to do the work until they're approved. And to Mrs. Bites, quite also not fundraise, which may be maybe the point that you want. If you want, I would suggest maybe deal with fundraising, make an amendment to that piece. These coaches are working with the kids all year round, so I think it's time.
What if we were to approve it subject to whatever amendments in the policy are forthcoming? Would that satisfy any concern you might have?
I would say no fundraising until the policy is approved.
Well, the thing is, a lot of these teams have to submit their budget to us in August. I'm not sure that they're, I'm not sure they're going to have, they're going to have to develop their budget, and again, many teams are going to have their fundraising built into their budget that's where they get their money. So, I think you're really hamstringing, and that's why we're looking at going back and look at these policies for what they were fundraising in September. The analysis has been submitted, and the business office had a chance to digest it, and we go back, look at the purpose for some of the fundraising if it's to fundraise for items that districts should be supplying. I thought that was the direction that you were going, unless I misunderstood.
Well, I know that...
You're on.
There's discussion in committee about limiting team fundraising to two per year. We approve other goal now, for example, we can have five before the policy, and it isn't just passed. And it stresses on the children, and we're trying to get that under control.
But the, what they're fundraising for, what they're...
Let me shut these all off and start again.
What they're fundraising for is, was the question, that the fundraising, the amount that they need to generate, is being driven by the things that they have to supply. So, if we're telling them, all right, we'll just take, what was the one example?
Baseballs.
All right, baseballs. Now, in my opinion, I think the district should be paying for baseballs for the baseball team. So, if they're fundraising for baseballs, I have no idea what a baseball costs. They get a couple, a hundred of them for, you know, thousand dollars. I have no idea. Now, that's going to drive, if they need, if they think you'll have one fundraiser that can generate $500, so they need to have two just to get the goal of raising a thousand dollars to fundraise for the things that we think the district should be supplying in the first place.
I hope that's the mentality we're trying to drift away from, that fundraising isn't targeted towards what they need. They fundraise based on what we say, the limits we put on them, and then they submit their needs to us based on the fact that, well, it can only have X amount of fundraisers, and it can only be this many days long, and then realistically, because the emphasis, the reason behind the policy is to eliminate the endless fundraising that some of these kids are involved in, where they can't go to work, they're quote-unquote, man, not, they're optional, but it's wink-wink.
Now, I understand that we discussed this.
I thought we were trying to turn that whole paradigm around, and if we don't stop it somewhere, then how do we?
Pardon me for interrupting, but this sounds like a policy committee discussion. Do we really want to get into a whole policy committee meeting right now?
Well...
Oh, no, we have to vote on something here, so...
So, the other question I would have then is, I mean, I, I've lived the fundraising, so, I mean, is, is our budget, are you, would you propose to increase the sports budget to cover?
Well, in policy and committee, we've been discussing that. We've been, we're asking the athletic facilitator to get some numbers to us about what they are using fundraising, what they're using money for, and what we should be paying for, and the recommendations would come from that. What we'll find is perhaps that some of the fundraising that is being done isn't just automatically going to be mapped into the budget because some of it isn't necessary.
For me, it seems like the way you've addressed this is with policy change. When that policy changes, it's not like groups are grandfathered in, the policy changes forever.
We're just about ready to pass the policy, right?
Yeah, so as soon as that policy is passed, the new coach and the teams are going to be beholden to that policy. So, that marks the point of transition between the old policy and the new policy.
But in that interim, now 30 or 60 days, we've already have a couple...
But that's the same across the board, meaning all the teams are...
Okay, well, could we vote on that issue intimately, so we can vote that choice ourselves? Okay, well, could we vote on that issue independently, so we can vote that choice ourselves, based on that?
Well, this will be a...
Can we pull it from the consent agenda?
This is not in the consent.
Can we pull it from the proposal to do A?
We can amend the motion. Yeah, I'll... I'll, um... Let's see. Back up. Just A, ten A. And I... Ten, with the exception of ten A, B.
Two A and three A.
Yeah, B one and three.
All right, let's ask him.
Wait.
What was that?
Why don't we...
Eight, three A's.
Eight, three A's. Is that...
Well, are you deducting the volunteer as well, or just pay all the coaching position?
Why don't we take each one individually then? All right, I amend my motion to limit it to item ten A. Ten A one. Sorry.
I second the motion.
Well, I was the original, so I have liberty, and I agree.
So the motion made by Mr. Wolf, second by Mr. Kurtz, is amended to be just item ten A one.
You don't want ten two in there for volunteers?
One and two.
No, because you got ten two B in there of all... Yeah, this is the coach.
Eight, one, A.
Thank you. A, one and two, how about?
Now, he said A one, it's his motion.
Yep, you're right.
Other comments or questions? Mr. Basil?
We have a motion for ten A, one A. Uh, Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Rathke?
Yes.
Mr. Speed?
Yes.
Mr. Tredowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Basil, yes. Mrs. Bites?
Yep.
Mr. Doty?
Yes.
Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Is there a motion for ten A two?
Ten, two, A and B.
Second. Motion by Mr. Wolf, second by Mr. Kurtz. Comments or questions? Mr. Basil?
B is the one I have to vote out. Just put it up there.
So, all right.
Sorry.
I amend my motion to make it ten two A.
Ten A two.
I agree.
Ten A two, right?
Ten A two A.
Ten A two A. Ten A two A.
Ten A two A.
Thank you.
Comments or questions? Mr. Basil?
Mr. Rathke?
Yes.
Mr. Speed?
Yes.
Mr. Tredowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Basil, yes. Mrs. Bites?
Yes.
Mr. Doty?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Is there a motion for item ten A two B?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Wolf, second by Mr. Kurtz. Comments or questions?
Can we amend to include ten A, three A as well, so we don't have to go another vote?
Do you want to vote B?
Three A, I mean, three A and B, yeah, one of them.
Could we just ask the question?
Happy... Ten A two B and three.
Mr. Wolf, it's your motion.
Let's just do it good enough, or...
Ten, ten A two B. It's my motion.
Okay.
Second by Mr. Kurtz. Comments or questions? Mr. Basil?
We have a motion for ten A two B. Mr. Speed?
Yes.
Mr. Tredowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Basil, yes. Mrs. Bites?
No.
Mr. Doty?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Rathke?
Yes.
Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passes eight one.
Is there a motion for item ten A three?
So moved.
Second. Comments or questions? Mr. Basil?
Motion for ten A three. Mr. Tredowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Basil, yes. Mrs. Bites?
No.
Mr. Doty?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Rathke?
Yes.
Mr. Speed?
Yes.
Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passes eight one.
And item ten B, a motion to approve the following transfer. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Dowski, second by Mr. Wolf on item ten B one A. Comments or questions? Mr. Basil?
Motion for ten B. Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Basil, yes. Mrs. Bites?
Yes.
Mr. Doty?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Rathke?
Yes.
Mr. Speed?
Yes.
Mr. Tredowski?
Yes.
Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Item eleven, programs.
Eleven A through D.
Second. Motion by Mr. Wolf, second by Mr. Kurtz for item eleven A through D. Comments or questions?
I would like... Would like to thank the Blazer Foundation for the donations. When I was very happy to be part of the board when we brought this back to life, as several members were on the board also, and this is what we envisioned when we brought this Blazer Foundation back to life, and I'm very happy to see that you were starting to see some payback and some dividends come back to the district for the purpose that we brought back. Also, for the music boosters for their kind donation, and of course, the PTC for their donation, and good luck for the TSA students who are going to Texas.
That's a staggering amount of money, actually, that the PTC had raised. Any elaboration on that?
Just...
Let me turn mine off.
I can just talk really loud. Nope, I'm sorry. Just that they did have a little bit of money that they did not exhaust, and that's why they added it directly to the reimbursement of our field trips. So, yeah, very kind of them. Thank you.
Ms. Bites, were you able to find out from Ms. Conlon how much money that the Blazer Foundation had been able to raise today?
No, I didn't. I'm sorry.
That's okay. I was just curious.
Well, I'd like to echo Mr. Wolf's comments, both on thanking the donators and wishing luck to the TSA students. Other comments or questions? Mr. Basil?
Motion for eleven A through D. Mr. Basil, yes. Mrs. Bites?
Yes.
Mr. Doty?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Rathke?
Yes.
Mr. Speed?
Yes.
Mr. Tredowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Moving on to item twelve, old business. We need nominees for school board treasurer.
I nominate Ms. Tredowski.
I second the motion.
I move we close nominations and elect Tamara Tredowski as school board treasurer for a one-year term effective July one, 2015, through June thirty, 2016.
All right, Mr. Doty was very anxious to get his mic on to do something that...
No.
He just wanted to nominate him before somebody else.
Exactly.
Is there a motion to close the nomination?
I just... Oh, is there a... My motion to load, close nominations and elect Ms. Tredowski.
Second.
Comments or questions? Motion by Mr. Kurtz, second by Mr. Speed to elect Ms. Tredowski as the treasurer through June thirty of 2016. I didn't hear that you accepted.
Doesn't it have to pass before? No, no, I don't think that's...
Mr. Basil?
Mrs. Bites?
Yes.
Mr. Doty?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Rathke?
Yes.
Mr. Speed?
Yes.
Mr. Tredowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Basil, yes. Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Tredowski.
Also, under old business, is there a motion to approve the 2015 summer band camp proposal for A, C, and D, C?
Motion for twelve C.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wolf, second by Mr. Rathke to approve the summer band camp proposal. Comments or questions?
I think my only comment on this is, I'd like to see if we can pull this out on a tickler file to address August of this year, so that we can come up with some sort of plan for this thing going forward.
I agree.
And put that on the board agenda.
Yeah, I think we need to approve it as it's now just a community license program. The students really value it, but it does seem to be something we look into and have to address in the future.
Other comments or questions? Mr. Basil?
Motion for twelve C. Mr. Doty?
Yes.
Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Rathke?
Yes.
Mr. Speed?
Yes.
Mr. Tredowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Basil, yes. Mrs. Bites?
Yes.
Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero.
Under new business, there's a TSA reimbursement discussion led by Mrs. Torschik.
Just like last year, the students have won a spot going to the national conference. This year it is in Texas, and they were asking if the board would be so kind to reimburse once again this year for registration, fifty dollars per day for food, and not a hundred dollars per person per room, but a hundred dollars per room, because there are going to be, I believe, four students per room. So they were looking for some support, as done last year with them all having to fly out to Texas. There's that cost that they are incurring this year that they did not last year when they traveled to Washington, DC, so... And I believe it is approximately, it's nine people altogether with our students and chaperone.
What would that total be?
Not exceed, we're looking at trying to not exceed $5,200. I believe that was what we kind of came to. That was the motion then.
How many students?
It is seven students and two chaperones. It is just the high... Yes. Yes. It's the total number of students that will be going.
Comments or questions?
This is the trip that we just approved.
Well, the trip is happening.
Okay, I'm just asking because it says it pays by students.
Right. Just reimbursing, and then reimbursing upon receipt.
Is there a motion to approve the reimbursement?
So moved, second.
Moved by Mr. Wolf, second by Mr. Doty for item thirteen B. Comments or questions?
I have a question just in mind. If I had seen the mind, we had a similar upon permission of receipts, we would give you a reimbursement. Do we know what percentage almost collected on that? Was it, did everybody commit and offer their receipts, or was it...
Yes, in the past, they have always come in and offered their receipt.
Okay.
Let me make one comment. It's Wednesday when we mentioned to prepare the agenda. Mr. Small and I both discussed that GSA has a guideline, because the cost of living throughout the different areas of the country, it varies, and GSA has a guideline on what hotel limits should be depending on where you're going, because there are areas that are much more expensive than others, like Washington, DC, for instance, versus Toledo, et cetera, or any other smaller city. So I think in the future, Mr. Small has agreed to provide that GSA guideline to us, so that we have some guideline for how much we need to reimburse for rooms.
The only... The only comment that I have with that is typically, if you're working for the government, okay, and you're in government, as I have my purchase order that I'm working for, a customer, it's not a government entity, they have set agreements with hotels, and if you're... You mention to them that you're working for a, B, C company, they give you the GSA rate. Now, if you're not, like, school, we wouldn't, the students or the organizer would not be able to get the GSA rate for the hotel, even though that, I'm just pointing out, there will be a difference between what the GSA rate set by the government and what your kids are actually able to, for the hotel, for the hotel meals and the incidentals.
No, you're right. There's a government rate, there's no doubt, but it may help a negotiating rate through the business office to the hotel. So it's just nice to have that available.
You should ask for government rate?
Are we, as a government entity, or can we?
We are a municipality.
So we can get the... When we travel, they can get the GSA rate from there?
Certainly try. If they want our business, I'd be fantastic.
This is a three-night trip, I guess, about $477 a person?
Um...
$150, food, $300, night, $300. I'm having trouble with the math.
I... With the room, we were looking at a hundred dollars per room opposed to per student, because we were able to put four students into a room.
Right.
If we would, they almost would have been walking out with money, so that's why we looked at the room amount.
But if we're paying for three nights lodging and fifty dollars per person per day, that would be $150 for three days, and then $75 per student for the lodging, that's $225. I'm trying to think.
Four nights, Mrs. Bites. Four nights.
Four nights, so it's a hundred dollars per person in lodging. You said four per room.
Hundred per room.
Hundred per room, and we only have four rooms.
Twenty-five dollars a night per person, four nights is a hundred dollars.
Or four hundred dollars.
I'm just breaking it down. The math I'm having trouble with is per, what are we paying per student? There's per person. There's nine people going, right?
Correct.
And if you divide...
It's per, it's... The food...
I understand that, but we can still break it down.
The food reimbursement is fifty dollars per person per day.
You're asking for $5,200, and it's nine people.
We're saying not to exceed that amount.
All we're doing, Mrs. Bites, is reimbursing their receipts.
Right.
So if their receipt's only amounts to $2,600, that's all we...
That's all, right.
Okay, just can't imagine how it could ever come to $5,200.
The ninety-five dollars per person per registration, that was, that was part of it. That would be for all nine. Even the chaperones have to be registered. So there's a little bit of a difference, and then it would be, it's times nine, not times seven.
Still would be down for a hundred. Okay, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Mr. Small, do they, these groups, when they book their travels, do they provide their, are they tax exempt for it, to get the, to get them off from paying taxes?
In any cases, we're not tax exempt for rooms.
Right, we're not. We tried that.
For our athletic teams, et cetera.
Other comments or questions?
I have just one question. Can we have these guys call the hotels, see if they get the GSA rate?
I believe that they are required. Mr. Orm, would you come up to the podium, because I'm not sure about your lodging? because I'm not sure about your lodging? Are you set to stay at a specific place? Is that how that works?
We're required to stay at a conference center. The Gaylord Conference facility was full and we were set to an overload facility where the TSA National established a rate and the rate is about $181 per night per room. That's better than what Joe Citizen can get.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Rager?
Got a motion for 13B. Made by Mr. Wolf, second by Mr. Dodey. Mr. Kurtz?
Yes.
Mr. Radka?
Yes.
Mr. Speed?
Yes.
Mr. Fedowski?
Yes.
Mr. Wolf?
Yes.
Mr. Basely, yes. Mrs. Bice?
Yes.
Mr. Dodey?
Yes.
Mr. Martino?
Yes.
Motion passes 9-0.
Item 14, policy. We have first reading on three policies. Mr. Wolf, is there anything that needs to be discussed about this?
Take any questions, but the suicide prevention is, suicide prevention is something that's required by law for the beginning of the new school year. And the child abuse policy was, what we have is pretty pathetic and it was revamped by PSBA. So the conflict of interest also is another one that was consolidated for one conflict of interest policy for the district instead of multiple ones from the different groups. Each has been, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Each has been vetted by the, our council.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Mr. Subers, I have a couple of questions for him on the conflict of interest policy. I guess my questions are a little bit more grammatical than anything else.
That was reviewed.
Was it?
By his office.
Yeah, I guess my question, like on page one of four, towards the bottom, conflicts of interest, part B talks about, and I know this refers, this is the same reference in the Ethics Act. It talks about parent, spouse, child, and sibling, but no other relatives, cousins, something else that may be close, aunts, uncles, those types of things. I'm just wondering whether we should extend that beyond our definition of familial ties or not. I just throw that out there.
We had discussion on that, didn't we? We had discussion on that.
So what was first?
We decided to leave it the way it was.
Okay.
That we didn't want to get into second kinds of things.
Okay. And the other question I had on number C is, is a person subject to this policy allowing his or her outside affiliations or allegiances to directly and negatively impact any student's opportunities in any district program? I think the verbiage there, I think I would have it say to directly and/or negatively impact. So it's either or. You can directly impact something and you can also negatively impact something or one or the other.
Where was that?
It's at the bottom of the first page under conflicts of interest, item number C. Second line of the paragraph.
It tells and/or.
And/or negatively, directly and/or negatively.
And/or negatively. Well, we can certainly.
Just look at it. Let me know what you have.
Do you want to table this or do you?
We, this is just the first reading. So if there's any amendments to it by the time we get to the second reading.
Okay, all right.
I don't, I don't think you can separate. I don't think you can parse that out because if you just say person can't directly impact, we're not trying to say that. You can directly impact somebody in a positive way, right?
Or.
Read it with the or. A person subject to this policy allowing his or her outside affiliations or allegiances to directly impact.
I think my concern is you can directly impact something to your own benefit or to somebody else's benefit that's affiliated with you in some way. And that may be positive for that specific person, but overall you're using your influence in a negative way for the district.
Well, Mr. Wolf, do you agree with what you've done in your policy?
If we were, if we would have this revised and we read, you know, a person subject to this policy allowing his or her outside of influence or allegiances to directly and/or negatively impact any student's opportunity in this area. Does that help?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments or questions?
I'll call Dr., Mr. Subers on the other comments I had on here because I guess I had some questions as it pertained to statutory conflicts of interest definition and what exactly that means. The last line of that paragraph says, the term does not include an action having a de minimis economic impact. I'm not sure I understand what that means de minimis relative to what? Relative to the person being benefited, relative to the district at large, relative to the group in, I'm not sure exactly what that means. So that's not a question for you guys to answer. That's I think one for Mr. Subers to answer for us.
Any other items from the board members? Seeing none, there are any other presentations by the public on the.
Hi, I'm Agent David Wyk, 61, Franklin My Way at the Swill. This is $53,000 for your budget. Is that including the cafeteria staff or not?
$56,000.
And is this going to be itemized, broken down for the public to view of any cuts to the staffs?
It's $53,000 and I'm not sure if, how the cafeteria works impact that, Mr. Small.
The total of the budget is $53,000. Cafeteria is not a part of the general fund, but this is just a general fund.
And what are they paid out of?
Cafeteria fund. Out of the cafeteria fund, proprietary fund, total, so.
Okay. Is this going to be itemized to the public to see all the cuts for all the staff and everything then?
What the board approved tonight is just the PDE 2028 document that will be available for this question. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone might have.
Thank you.
Steve Miller, 600 Ridge Drive, have a, have a comment and a couple of questions. I guess the comment is to the gentleman that claimed that no one is not moving in, no one's not moving in. See, I'm not damn good at educated persons, so let that go. The person I've claimed that people are not staying away from the young school district because of the school situation. I know a couple of founders that chose not to look to move here because of the things we're on for. So it is a current, I just wanted to know that. But my real purpose for being here is I have some questions about the fund balance. I don't know if we can answer, but it seems like the fund balance continues to be a ball that we're chasing. When we came out of last year, the fund balance was $2.76 million. And then based off of the first preliminary budget, we had a $3.8 million fund balance. And then the budget that was just submitted had a $3.4 million fund balance. And it appears that we're going to use 1.3 of it and then have some of it allocated for pension funds and rest remains. Are this numbers accurate?
Mr. Small, wait. As I said in the beginning, Mr. Miller, please get all your questions out so you don't run out of time.
My question's on the fund balance. As I said, I'm trying to keep track of what happened in the fund balance because if we really had $2.76 million come out last year and we had $3.85 million, we obviously had money left that we could have spent on programs. So I'd like to see if we can find a way to keep track of our fund balance.
Thank you.
Mr. Small, you can answer because I'm not sure what the question is.
Tell us to watch the fund.
I'll repeat it. At the end of the night, at the end of last year's budget, if you take a look at the last year's budget produced in June of last year, we had $2.76 million fund balance. The budget that was produced this year, the very first budget, had a $3.85 million fund balance. How did it grow, is this a question?
There have been some efficiencies made during the year, Mr. Miller, but if you want to talk fund balance, if you check that out over the next couple of years, it turns negative in about four years.
But the issue is that every year we say we're taking fund balance and every year it stays the same when it goes out. That's the problem.
Well, what we've been doing is creating efficiencies to keep that fund balance. We have to have a certain amount of fund balance. This year, for instance, if the legislature and the governor don't come to terms on a budget by June 30th, we're going to be living off our fund balance for several months until they do. So we cannot, I mean, we're mandated by law to have some money in reserve.
Oh, absolutely. But at one point, the board agreed that you could buy a $2 million fund balance. Everybody thought that was fine. But then you actually had $3 million fund balance.
Mr. Miller, I think, I believe we did it as a percentage of the overall budget and we did it half the recommendation. Wasn't it recommended that we had a 5%? Kept 5% in the budget in the.
Mr. Silver, did PSBA regulate 5%? We don't keep 5%.
And we already, we had half the industry recommendation. That's the best you can do. We're doing the best we can with the fund balance, I hope.
But if you agree that $2 million is sufficient and you have more than that, you have an extra $1 million.
But there's no way to really know what you're going to need until your year progresses and you look at your fund, your actual, when you're budgeted. So we ended up ahead and that's actually a good thing. What I'm telling you, we did extremely conservative of estimating for the budget, for that fund.
Just happens every year. I find a better way.
Do you want it to go the other way? You want us to be negative?
No, I want it to be accurate.
We can't be accurate. It's funded.
Let me try to address your question, Mr. Miller, because I think that's been where you're standing now. And it is a little frustrating because we would sit back as a board and we'd make decisions on program or we're trying to make a decision on taxes based on estimates of fund balance. Okay? And we're sitting in a current budget year and estimating what our fund balance will end up being by the end of the fiscal year. And we don't really know that to a degree of 100% accuracy. It's a budget after all. Certain costs come in that you're not aware of, facilities costs come in, you get additional revenues that you didn't anticipate. So some of these things provide a variance. What I have found over the years is that the variance in the fund balance is less than 1% of the budget overall, which is, as you know, running a business, pretty darn accurate. If your, if your overall actual costs come in within a half a percent or less than 1% of your budgeted costs, you're doing a pretty good job in estimating what your actual costs are going to be from one year to the next. Now, having said that, a half a million dollars or a million dollars is a lot of money. Okay? And I take it probably a different perspective. I don't think people should be raising taxes on somebody and then you have another million dollars suddenly available that you didn't need necessarily. Somebody else may say, well, we should have spent that on adding more program or something else. Everybody can always spend the money. I think what we found was overall, we did a study years ago where we figured we needed at least one and a half million dollars of working capital to get us through July and the first two, three weeks of August. Because at that point in time, our local revenues start to come in and we can begin funding the school district from the tax collections of that fiscal year. Over time, we've had issues where we received Plan Con B refunds from the state that were not anticipated hitting in that particular fiscal year. One year that was $873,000. So that provided a variance in the fund balance. We have found that the overall economic impact of some of the decisions we made were more positive than we had anticipated. We had issues like demand response and some other things bring in, drive revenues that we didn't know would be coming in or at those levels. We found savings along the way. In other cases, we use more fund balance than we had anticipated as well. So I'm sure we can sit down, usually every August, we sit down as a finance committee and we do an autopsy on the previous year to see exactly what the variances were and explain those variances. And I don't have those notes with me today, but I'm sure I can pull those out from last August and prior August meetings where we discussed exactly what the variances were from one budget year to the next. And those should actually be in the minutes that are online as well.
But on the minutes, I have the time to record. You said that they have the minutes.
Well, they should be in the finance committee minutes. And just once we start recording the finance committee minutes, we didn't necessarily write all the minutes down, but I have notes. And so if you want to contact me via email, I'm happy to share that information with you. I'm not sure Mr. Small would have those at his fingertips since he's relatively new to the school district.
Just every year it seems the variance is positive. Every year that I've been.
I wouldn't necessarily say that. I know that as a board, we, for a while, we were deliberately trying to spend down the fund balance because the way we looked at it was, you know, if you had a decision to cut a program or to raise taxes and you were sitting on some money, you ought to use the money you're sitting on. That was our philosophy.
Actually, and actually, the funds didn't go away when we did that.
Yeah. Well, like I said, there were some variances there, large swings in the, in the fund balance for things that we did not necessarily anticipate. One year we prepaid a bond, you know, in one fiscal year versus the other, and that provided a huge variance because that debt payment should have been recorded in the post-year as opposed to the pre-year. And because we prepaid it in June and not in July, that debt, that debt service payment ended up on one year and not the other. And that impacted fund balance. But that was more of an accounting error than it was real dollars. But that's where you would see a variation as well. So there are variations.
Thank you.
Julia Olmerson, 637 Jefferson Street, France. Now, I just want to make a comment. This is the second time or maybe the third time I've heard somebody here say that committee meeting minutes are available on the website. When I asked if they were available on the website last year and I couldn't find them, I was told that the recordings served as the minutes. And there is my notice because last year I sat through 35 hours of facilities meeting recordings to find and answer them anyway. So if there is a place where it is and whoever told me that I had to listen to all those recordings and spoke, that would be great for the future.
That the recordings are the minutes of the committee meetings?
That's correct.
So just now you told him.
What I told him was that he could listen to the recorded minutes for the finance committee meetings. We typically discuss, and the agendas are probably out there as well, we typically discuss the autopsies of the prior year in August or September, depending on when the first finance committee meeting was after the start of the new fiscal year.
Okay, that's, that's fine. You don't have to rehash what you just told me. But I guess when I was, when I heard your last meeting and this meeting, that there were actual written meeting minutes, I must have misheard you. So thank you.
Thank you.
Basin, did you mean that periodically you release reports from those meetings that serve sort of as?
I have, I take notes during all the meetings and so on my agenda. And, you know, so if somebody from the public has a particular question, Mr. Miller, on a particular meeting, I'm happy to share with you those notes that I have if that helps get you to your answer faster. And I would imagine that would work for anybody in the committee. I know for a long time, before we were recording the committee meetings, I was writing the minutes for the committees that I served on. And those minutes should be out there on the website for some of the review as well.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Lisa Bradley and I'm going to send them a huge thank you. We know there are lunch ladies and we all want them gone. If you get rid of them and bring in new lunch ladies, you're going to lose a lot of money because you know who's going to go and buy lunch ladies. Think about it. We have known some of these lunch ladies for a long time and now we have to watch them leave. How is that fair? I'm sure they're lucky then, but if you get rid of the lunch ladies, you're going to lose even more money. These are by far the best lunch ladies. You're never going to find anyone better than them no matter how hard you try. So it's a fun trying. You already have the best lunch ladies right now. If you think you're going running now, if you get rid of the lunch ladies, you're going to lose not only the best lunch ladies out there, but two times more money. Every day, I'm saying to make sure I eat. The one time I didn't have enough money to get lunch, so I had to get a cheese sandwich. I made sense, I had to buy lunch. But she had, she told me to wrap those and I was able to buy lunch. Do you think outside lunch ladies would do that? No. Why would you punish the lunch lady just because you don't have enough money? How is that fair again, in any way? They didn't do that. It's not their fault. So why should they do hurt financially to something they are not responsible for? You don't know what the outside lunch ladies will be like. But all you need to know is you have the nicest lunch lady right here. Would you really take that for granted and risk bringing really bad in your lunch ladies considering the kids are taking time out of their day to come to meet the best lunch ladies? That says a lot, doesn't it? We all have a lot to say. So our lunch ladies stay and we're doing everything we can to keep them. Does that mean anything to you? I haven't had my lunch for a month now, which is $53, you'd watch just by one person over a month's time.
Yes. Do you have a copy of that, please? Thank you. Saying no to the public comment, is there a motion to adjourn?
Very temple. I just want to, so hard I could tell her ladies, it was wonderful. Our solicitor is not here, as I say. Did we pay him for meetings if he's not here? Did we pay him a fat, flat fee? So my question is.
Is that your question?
I believe we have an annual stipend with Fox Rothschild.
And is he not a complete company?
Well, something may have, Mr. Subers.
Yeah, he does not have anybody else to fill in for him, but he can.
Well, to be honest with you, Mr. Temple, I'm not sure what somebody else could contribute if they're not familiar with the issues that are going on here at Daniel Boone at the time. And if something came up in Mr. Subers' schedule that was personal in nature that prevented him from being here, I think we afford him the courtesy of that issue. He's been here consistently for the last eight years that I've been here for every single meeting. I can only think this is probably the first time that he has been unavailable that I've been aware of.
I'm just saying, when I don't do my job, I don't get paid either.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move second.
If anyone, if any member of the public has something to say, please come up as the other person finishes.
Want a lineup to continue?
Elizabeth Mollman, 14 E63 Gersbrough. I saw that you have the food job in the paper or not in the paper, but on the website. Are you guys not taking the bid from that of the company?
That hasn't been decided yet. The food service manager was advertised. They give ourselves choices. But until we see what that advertisement brings in and while the one proposal we have is being studied, we're just giving ourselves choices. Nothing's been decided.
Did the other company bid with us or without us?
Mr. Small, I believe it's both, right?
So they want us both ways?
No, one, one part of the bid is with the employees. No, one, one part of the bid is with the employees and want us without.
Well, what did they put in? Did they put in the bid just for the food or did they put in the bid with the corporate salsa? Or we're not allowed to know that?
The RFP was circulated asking any interested vendor to provide a response with and without labor. And that's what we're reviewing now. We have one response and the response was both ways.
So they put in a bid for us and for just the food?
They, they provided one, providing the labor and one using our labor. We, we're providing.
So you have decided which one we're going to take?
That's correct.
So when will we find out? Because our last day is June ninth. And so what, we're going to go on, out not knowing that we have jobs or not?
We have established a date for making the decision yet, everything's under review.
We're, we're trying to work very hard to figure out a, a way to make this work. So one of the things we're doing is we're looking at other options that are available to the school district. There's a variety of different, there's a variety of different pieces that we can put in place under different scenarios. So we're, we're looking at all those different options and one of them is to bring in our own food service manager with our own staff, which is the way it was done ten years ago. And until we know what that cost is and whether there's a candidate out there that's, that's going to be able to run the food services, we don't have the information available to us to make that decision. I would think and I would hope that the employees of, of the district would want us to explore that option, um, before making a decision with, with the particular contract that we have in hand. So that's what we're trying to do and we need some time to get that information in.
So, so there's no misunderstanding, there's actually four options. It's the one bid we have with our employees or without, and it's the food service manager with our employees or without. Is that correct, Mr. Small? Thank you.
Well, I just, you know, like, when I leave on June ninth, I'm not going to know if I have a job or not.
We'll make the decision as soon as possible.
That, that may very well be correct. It may not be until the end of June that we have an answer for you.
So that's a whole month like wasted that I could be looking for another job then?
I don't know what to tell you other than we're working on it.
Okay.
Okay, Sharon Morris on Bird Street in Birds Row. Um, actually, do you have that information available? You'd probably just look back in the budget and see what the cost was and maybe just plug in some numbers. Math is in my struggle point, so. As for the cafeteria ladies, because they did do that years ago, the school flourished, it still flourished, you brought in the other companies and it just, you don't want to start me on that one. Um, Mr. Kurtz, I have a question for you. What are you going to do when you graduate college? You're ready for reelection, are you staying here because you're supposed, is, is he not answering that?
No, Ms. Morris, no, that, that's a personal question. There, there are nine board members here.
I'm not.
No, Ms. Morris, please. There's nine more board members up here. Any one of them can do anything after tonight.
Right.
What Mr. Kurtz plans to do after college is, is Mr. Kurtz's business.
Well, I feel that it's also the parents' business because.
But he's not going to answer that tonight?
Well, when can he answer?
He's not going to answer it as a member of the board.